We're calling the Regional School District Planning Board meeting to order at 5:31. Roll call attendance. From Alford.
Yes.
Lucy is here, Carl.
Yes.
From Great Barrington, Peter.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
From Stockbridge, Patrick. Patrick's here. Is Michael here?
No. He's, I, Michael Canales from Stockbridge. He's, he's in the attendees.
Oh, can you bring him over? Thank you. Uh, from Sheffield, Bonnie. Bonnie here?
Here, here.
Thank you. Nadine?
Yep, here.
Colin?
Here.
Uh, from Egremont, George. Tom Burkle.
Tom is here, just joined.
Hey. Hi, is Jim here by any chance? Yeah, Jim's here. Great. Um. From Monterey, Don.
Here.
John.
Here.
Is Kim here? Uh, from New Marlboro, Tara.
I'm here.
Susan?
I'm here.
Is Nancy Worthington here? Is she in the attendees?
I am here.
Are you? Are you here? I'm not seeing you on this.
I'm here as Bonnie Silver.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, let me change my name.
Bye. West Stockbridge, Maria's here. Is Andy here?
He's, he's not.
Okay. And is Sarah here?
No.
Okay. Well, we have a quorum. Uh, I did want to introduce our new members. We have, or will have, uh, five new members and some are here. So, uh, without putting you on the spot, I'd just like to go around the room and have you introduce yourself, where you're from and what brings you to this work. So why don't we start with you, Carl?
Um, I am the, uh, recently elected, uh, school committee member from Alford. Uh, I did serve on the school committee for a nine-year period until 2018. Uh, I think that was 2009 to 2018. I was chair of the committee for, I believe, I've lost track, but I believe six of those nine years. Uh, and, uh, I'm now just a, a regular soldier on the committee. And happily so.
Well, we're happy to have you on the, on the planning board. Um, Stockbridge, Patrick and Michael, do you have a report for us on? Okay, Michael, do you have a report on your third member? Is that still being decided?
Yes, it's still wait, it's still being decided.
Okay, no problem. Um, Jim, welcome. Would you introduce yourself? Jim, you're muted. Okay, we'll come back. Um.
No, I got it.
Oh, great.
That was me. Yeah. I'm Jim DePisa. I'm, uh, uh, I live in Egremont. I'm on the Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee.
Well, welcome, welcome to the planning board. And Nancy.
Uh, Nancy Worthington, also on the Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee.
Okay, so, um, one thing we need to do, and I'm not sure this meeting is the time to do it because we don't have enough of the new members on yet, is to assign the new members to our subcommittees. There are a couple of subcommittees that, oh, Marie, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to tell you Andy Potter's in as an attendee, if you guys can let him in.
I already did, yep, I already promoted him.
Thank you. Sorry, Lucy.
Oh, that's okay. Um, so there are a few subcommittees that need additional members. Um, in particular, Ed Quality, uh, we need someone from Egremont on community outreach. Uh, or Monterey or West Stockbridge. Um, Operations needs another member. Um, so the new members should think about, uh, which subcommittees they'd like to serve on and shoot me an email and we'll try and get those assignments made before the next meeting. Jake, you want to give an update on budget funding and advocacy?
Yeah, sure. I'm going to share my screen just to go through a couple of slides. Let's see if that's okay?
Yeah.
You can do it quickly. So just a quick. I'm not on mute, right? Okay, you can hear me? All right, very good. Just a quick update on where we stand with spending. Um, I do this at every meeting, as you all know. Um, and, uh, we have a number of funding streams that we're pulling from. And then we have, um, a grant application that's, um, um, hopefully being reviewed and will be reviewed positively. So if we work from top down, uh, we have town funds, um, which we've been working through. We have around fifteen thousand, a tad more than fifteen thousand, um, left, and that will carry us through the end of this calendar year. We might have a tad leftover. I think I predicted at the last meeting, we would be within a couple hundred dollars. We're going to maybe have a little bit more than that. Um, but then, um, we're going to move down to the second source, which is a bucket of money that we have stored over on the Burke 12 side, being managed by Berkshire Community College. We've been spending down that money, uh, for a variety of purposes, including Mary Nash around PR, uh, the creation of the video, uh, graphic designer on the posters you're here from. We've got OPEB study being done right now. Um, uh, paying for the Abrahams Group to continue to do ongoing fiscal analysis. Yada, yada, you kind of get where we're at. Um, and I'll show you kind of how we're going to spend that money out. Um, we have around forty thousand dollars to work with there. We also have, uh, received a fifty thousand dollar grant from Bar Ed Visioning. That's being, um, um, invested in the consultants that are doing focusing the work on grades nine through twelve. You'll hear a little bit more about that later in the Ed, um, uh, Quality Subcommittee Report. And then we have some, we have some possible additional funds. Uh, as you know, we went out to some of the towns and asked for money, but asked, uh, that they hold those requests. I think a couple of towns have acted positively on that request. Um, we also have a large community compact grant out, and then we have, um, potentially an earmark on the Burke 12 side that could be used, uh, some of the money for additional consulting. That's about where we stand. Um, I'll move to the next one. So we're going to project forward with that forty thousand dollar bucket on the Burke side that I had mentioned earlier. Um, I'm projecting out about three months, um, for, um, the spending of those funds, and that would include your project manager admin support, additional, um, support for the Abrahams Group that's doing a lot of work on the, on the fiscal assessment, the assessment methodologies and scenario building, um, paying for website, um, Russ Dupre who's supporting legal work around the regional agreement. And then I do have some money built in for Ed Visioning stipends as was requested by the Ed Quality Subcommittee. That gets us pretty close to, um, I apologize for the periods there. Gets us pretty close to what we have available. We have about thirty thousand dollars available and need to spend a little bit more than that. So we have a, just a tad bit of a deficit, but keep in mind that, uh, many of these figures are, um, not really rough estimates, but they're relative estimates, and I'm sure we can get very close. Uh, I do want to point out that this gets us only through the March, a month of March or January, February, March, um, and it doesn't include Ed Visioning stipends for the other groups that we talked about convening. So the third slide is, um, this is sort of the big, um, budget that I've shared, uh, last two meetings. It gives us just, it was a three and six and twelve month projection. Reason I'm sharing this is just to give you a general idea of what we had costed out, uh, the budget for, um, for the board, um, projecting out, um, different time periods. But the reason this is important is because we're focused on a twelve-plus month budget. Uh, and we had a deficit of about a hundred and fifty thousand, which is really the formation of our application for the Community Compact. We filed that about a month ago. And, uh, the Community Compact Application, which is on this next slide, it actually runs past fiscal year twenty-three, so we're eligible to spend the money into, I think, the early part of October. So it'll go partially into twenty twenty-four, which is great if we are to receive it. We actually applied for two hundred thousand. You might ask, why do we apply for two hundred thousand when, uh, on the last slide, you showed a deficit of a need of about a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, because we're a multi-community effort, um, we were eligible for up to two hundred thousand, so we went for the full, uh, ask. And, uh, keep in mind that that budget that I presented on the last page also takes you, took you through July one. So this would be potentially additional, um, funding that would carry for a few months beyond July one into the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So you'll see, um, I'm happy to provide a copy of the grant. Uh, the fiscal agent sponsor on the grant is Berkshire Hills. Um, and I appreciate letters that were written by both, um, Southern Berkshire and Berkshire Hills in support of this. Um, but you'll see that we've got money and everything from the management side to the Ed Visioning side to community engagement and consultant work. So we're hoping to hear soon. Um, and, uh, if we get these funds, then we'll be in excellent shape. If we don't, then we've got money through the end of March. Um, and I think we could then have a conversation about going back to the towns if needed. Then the last slide, just on this topic of budget and advocacy, is that we continue to communicate with the Department of Ed around all things related to the Regional School District Planning Board. Um, we were very happy to have been asked to present at the November, um, Mass Association of Schools Superintendent's and School Committees Joint, um, Conference in November, uh, and Lucy was, uh, gracious enough. She and I, um, joined the presentation virtually. And Bill Cameron and Brendan Sharon, who represented Burke twelve, were there in person and we did a, um, shared presentation on all things Burke twelve and the work in, in of the Regional School District Planning Board. Um, we've done outreach to the delegation, um, both are represented, um, Pignatelli and our, um, our incoming Senator Mark, um, about our work, uh, and then obviously the last thing is just a work that we've done around advocating for support for the Community Compact Grant. So I can stop sharing and, uh, if there are any specific questions related to budget or advocacy or Lucy you want to throw in because you've been part of these conversations in this work, I'm glad to have you offer any additional comments.
Yeah, just like open the floor for any questions or comments. I think there've been no surprises since our last meeting in terms of the budget and where we think, um, we are and will be, and, um, we're hopeful that we're going to get, uh, some funds from the Community Compact Grant, which would obviate, we hope, the need to go back to the towns, but, uh, we do have a Plan B. Three of the towns have approved up to fifteen thousand and others are on hold pending a decision on this grant application. So I'm optimistic about that.
So the only thing I probably should just also mention is that, um, you, you all know I've accepted a part-time, short temporary assignment in Linux, um, as the interim superintendent, and that could, um, be as short as assignment is thirty days and up to six months through July one. Um, so during that time period, um, I won't be drawing the same level of salary, um, from the funding streams on either the Burke side or the Regional School District Planning Board side. The idea is that I'll be working, um, three days, uh, in Linux and then two plus days on, um, Burke and Regional School District Planning Board work. Um, however, uh, the Burke twelve board has agreed that the, um, emphasis of my energies on those additional two days will be invested in the Regional School District Planning Board work. So I, I, I am impressed upon them, the importance of where we are in process in my need to stay connected to this. And so as a result, we've got some other individuals who will help to relieve the load on the Burke twelve side and managing some of the projects over there. So I think we're in pretty good shape. So I want to make sure you all know that, um, I'm completely committed to this process and want to make sure we follow it through. Um, but we may have some additional savings there in that you're not, I won't be drawing as much, um, you know, cash in terms of the project management line.
Okay, I don't see any hands up, so why don't we move on on the agenda, uh, reports by subcommittees. Operations Transportation Report, John, you're up first.
Great, thank you. So, uh, the Operations Subcommittee just met this afternoon at four thirty, excuse me, to go over the, um, Transportation Study. And, um, I just want to spend a few minutes, Lucy says I only have five, including her question, so I'm going to keep this brief. The study is available on the, on the website. Uh, it's, I believe, over a hundred pages. It has an enormous amount of data. Uh, I, we all think it was very, very thorough and, um, good and interesting work. So I just want to, uh, mention a few things in the following order. So we ended up with four scenarios off the baseline, and I just want to let people know, Scenario two, uh, represents a, uh, combined district, uh, with all students attending the current schools. Uh, three is attending schools in the closest proximity to the residence. And the same, uh, split is between four A and four B. Uh, the difference is that four A and four B have a common bell schedule. Um, and then four A is attending current schools and four B is proximity, proximity to residence. So there's a fifth, also a fifth option also, which is a cost alternative to the contracting of the whole, uh, transportation budget and that, I'll get to that in a minute. So, so given these four scenarios, um, the, um, the, the kind of the net financial impact, uh, to four A or four B, which, which most importantly reduces bus uh, runs for students. And in four B, in fact, for somewhere in that ninety-two to ninety-five percent of the cases for most kids, uh, you know, it's well, well under, uh, forty-five minutes. So there's a, there's an, there's, I think, I think that the study almost understates the potential for cutting uh, bus times in four A and four B. Uh, it would be a net fifty-four thousand dollar and change increase. Um, given that we anticipate eighty percent state aid, which, uh, we have been getting ninety to ninety-five, but we're anticipating eighty. And, um, so given, so given, given the slight increase in the best scenario for reducing bus runs and, um, the negligible cost increase over the, the budget of the entire school district, school district, new school district. Um, it, it seems like it's a, it's a, it's a very positive thing for, for the, for transportation. But, uh, we also felt that we didn't want the tail wagging the dog. So, uh, the Subcommittee and the con, and the consultant really agreed that transportation should not be the driving cost in any of our, I'm sorry, the driving consideration in any of our, uh, our own considerations as far as regionalization is concerned. It's, uh, it really is, uh, not nearly as important as education. But in fact, in these scenarios, four A and four B, we're really coming out in very, very good shape as far as transportation is concerned, which is a slight, a slight increase in cost if we decided to go with the, the best scenario that reduces the most busing for the, for the most kids. So it seems like a win-win situation. Um, the only thing I'll add is we also looked at an alternative to contracting, the contracting for the buses, I believe, went up twenty-nine percent this year. Correct me if I'm wrong. And, um, it's, it's not a very competitive process right now. We don't have very many, uh, bidders. And if we went to a, um, inner validity collaborative, we have some options that are in the study that could reduce costs even further. And I won't get into those scenarios here. You can read about them and, and, um, what I'd like to do in my five minutes though is just if people have kind of overarching questions or concerns, um, they should ask them now. And then if there's details, you can spend a lot of time looking at the details on the, uh, on the study itself. So Lucy, let's just open it up.
Steve, Don's hand is up. Uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Lucy. John, um, I'm not sure if I may have missed something, but, uh, assuming, uh, that we ultimately decide on putting the high school uh, on the, uh, Great Barrington site. Is that, does it still hold that nobody will be, uh, spending more than forty-five minutes on a bus?
All these, all these scenarios make that assume that the high schools in Great Barrington, all of them. So yes, the, quite the answers, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Colin?
I had, um, two questions. I, there was, at some point in our conversations, someone was saying that there wasn't enough information about transportation and had questions about it. Does this supplement whatever we had and answer the questions for those? And Jake may be the only one that knows what those questions are. I don't know what they were, but I'm just trying to close the loop on that issue. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Jake.
No, no, I, I didn't mean to cut you off. The, the two most pressing questions that I get related to transport trade, transportation are, um, first and foremost, ride time for students, no question. And folks are very concerned about, um, the amount of time that kids will spend on buses. Um, and then the second question I get is, uh, cost related to transportation. So I think that the first report that we did, um, you know, um, you know, I did, I wrote most of it. I did the scenario building with, um, Marie Messini, who was very helpful. Um, and a lot of the same conclusions hold. But what Rich Librian Alliance did is they use software to literally look at where every single kid lives. And they, um, the booting really looks very specifically at that. Um, so I am hopeful if this answers the questions that have been asked. Well, I think, uh, that comment you just made gives me confidence about the report, and that is there was software used and there, I, as way back thirty years ago, I was a transportation engineer and I knew that there was software that can do modeling. So that's great to know that, that that was done and, and that hopefully that gives whoever had the con, the questions confidence, um, that, that this was thought out. My second question was, on page nine, there's the, the scenarios that we're talking about, and it, it lists cost savings. They're all identical for Scenario two, four A and four B. Is that a typo or am I just not reading it properly? I have to look at it, to be honest with you. Okay, I, I pulled it off the website, so I didn't know, and I, I just was, um, I, maybe I don't know what I'm looking at either.
No, that's, that's five, Colin. That's if we went with a different bus company, an entirely different contract. And so, okay, I, so what you're seeing is the cost savings in each of those scenarios, if we go with another bus company are the same.
Gotcha, got it.
Yeah, yeah. So I just want to emphasize, uh, what Jake was talking about, about the detail of the study. We were able with the software literally to compute each current child and, um, the data doesn't quite show, I mean, if one child moves, goes to another school or anything changes, which is, which happens from year to year anyway, right? There's always variables, variability, people move in and out of the district, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They change homes, they change, uh, uh, they have a new sibling, whatever. Um, so you know, it's, it's all a bit of a moving target, but what was interesting is you could remove, if you could change the, the, um, the, the, the home of a few students or you get a student that's in high school and has his or her own car, and suddenly there's nobody on a ride for more than twenty-three minutes. So when you, when we get down to the granular, you know, uh, data in the future, it's, it's, uh, it's likely, it's likely to, to improve even more, I guess, I think, given there's uncertainty and all that. So I just, I just want to emphasize that the, the data, it doesn't quite show, uh, how, how, um, how well we might do in reducing bus runs.
Any more questions? Okay, um, Finance Subcommittee, Nadine.
Thank you. Um, Finance Subcommittee has met, um, to study, uh, various, um, assessment methodologies. Um, we've looked at three. We will meet again tomorrow, um, to present a fourth. Um, that is a possibility. Um, we're also discussing salaries and how that affects, um, the savings or not. Um, we've come to no conclusions yet. We've just really been taking in an awful lot of information for anyone who has not ever been involved with, uh, trying to understand, um, the assessment formula. Um, it's a, it's a process, it's a learning process. Um, terminology is, uh, is new for many and, um, can be a little confusing if you don't use the right word in the right location. So, um, some of us have been involved in assessment conversations in the past, so it's not foreign to all of us, but, uh, we are moving forward and hope to come to some conclusion. I, I hope within the next meeting or two as to what assessment methodology might make the most sense.
Just two other quick comments and thanks, Nadine. That's a great job. Um, we are also looking at capital. Um, so obviously existing debt, um, potential debt related to the new high school. And then future capital debt would be, um, which would be, um, part of a, an eight-town merged district. Uh, and then also this idea of legacy liability. So we have commissioned a study with Odyssey advising advisors, Parker Elmore, doing an OPEB study. So, um, appreciate both districts who I know have had to provide information to Parker, but we're hopeful that we can also bring that information back to the Finance Subcommittee, which again feeds into the bigger question of the impact at the town level. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the assessment methodologies? I guess the only thing I'd like to add is that there's been a lot of creativity brought to the table, uh, by our research team and there's on the Finance Subcommittee. Um, and we're looking at all kinds of ways to slice and dice this. So if you're really interested in what the possibilities are, I really encourage you to attend the Finance Subcommittee meeting tomorrow evening. Okay, community outreach. I guess I'm up on that. Um, we did get our posters and flyers printed up. Um, Eileen Mooney was kind enough to include in her monthly newsletter an actual physical copy of our flyer, which essentially just identifies who we are and encourages people to get informed. So very thankful to Eileen for doing that. About two hundred and fifty flyers, uh, went out in that newsletter, so that's great. Um, but all of us need to swing by my office, pick up some of those flyers and get. But all of us need to swing by my office, pick up some of those flyers and get them in your respective town halls. Libraries, et cetera, because I think, as I've said before, the better informed. Our community members, the better the decision is going to be. We have a community forum scheduled and offered for Saturday. Hoping that's going to go forward and we're looking for other venues and other possibilities. In particular, in the town of Agawamont, Jim, if you've got some ideas about. A good venue and time to do that, be very hopeful and thankful for your input on that. We've got another student forum scheduled. We've had two. We've got a third one scheduled for. Mid to early December. So Laura Rodriguez will be reporting on all three. After that third one is completed. What else do we have, Jake? On community outreach?
Yeah, we have, we have finalized the, the overview video. Which is now posted at the top of the webpage. It's also been, is being circulated on CTSB. And I know Mary Nash has been helping to push some content out with Patrick's support additionally on social media. Trying to be more consistent on that. We're also working on a short video related to CVTE, which links into the work on the ed quality group. And then we've been asked to do some translations into Spanish, which we're working on right now. And hopefully we can get those settled and then additionally publish content in Spanish.
Great, thanks Deb.
My question had to do with translation and are we doing any forums in Spanish and do we? Have, if, I guess, if, if we have no plans for that, I am happy to. See if a group that I work with is interested in helping to put one together that would be accessible. To people who speak Spanish that could be done in Spanish and could be a more comfortable one. So are we doing it? And if not, would you like me to do that?
Yeah, very much would like you to help us with that.
Okay, I will.
The idea is to get subtitles for the overview video. Get the flyer translated into Spanish, but having a forum conducted in Spanish would be the best. In terms of engaging people and getting content out there.
Do you have a resource for getting the flyer translated?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm, I'm actually working on that right now. So I, I'm hoping that we're going to have that done by the end of this week.
Okay, if you get stuck, let me know.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Deb, Ed Quality.
I'm going to let Jake do most of the talking about the visioning things. What I want to say about Ed Quality is that we are down to three members. So we have not scheduled our next meeting because I was hopeful that we could include any new members to. Educational quality in the doodle poll so that we could schedule at a time that we could include anyone else who's joining the committee. We, so, so the committee itself has not met in a while and. I'd love to be able to send out a doodle poll this week to see if we could get it in before Christmas and if not immediately after. So that we can begin to look at what's happening in the different processes that are going on that Jake, I'm going to ask Jake to describe. And begin to. See what we do with it and I, I would like to mention that we've had a question about educational definition of educational quality. And I think that that's one of the things that deserves some conversation in the subcommittee. At our next meeting, because it's, it's just, it, there's some. Some question about the ambiguity that, that surrounds educational quality. And I think that I'd like us to address it as a group. So those, those are my comments on the educational quality subcommittee. Jake, are you comfortable talking about the visioning activities that have been going on?
Yeah, of course, yeah. Thanks. So as you know, the plan for Ed Quality Visioning was to. Work in four areas, primarily based on grade span. So pre-K through four, five through eight, nine through twelve, and then a specific group focused on career vocational technical ed. As aligned with the nine through twelve work. So based on mostly limited funds and also some feedback we heard around the challenges associated with just getting folks. Who are overly scheduled to be able to participate, we focused on nine through twelve. So we've launched the nine through twelve. And the CVTE work. The nine through twelve work, as you know, is being supported by the Bar Foundation. And we've hired two consultants who are busy at work. They've already spent, I think, one day in district. I believe they're actually heading in district again tomorrow. Matt Plarsky and Michelle Phillips, who are tremendous. And really appreciate both superintendents who have offered their time and their staff and access to students. A lot of listening right now, sort of the idea of research and listening and getting community feedback. But also sort of understanding and beginning to focus on design elements. That would be included in a potentially merged high school. The idea of course is not, you're not completely designing this new high school. We're, we're starting to set some sort of common. Core values and expectations and aspirations with the idea that. If and when that merger were to occur, there'd be a lot of work that would need to happen, both at the school level. And at the, at the newly formed committee level as, as this, this work was. If the new school was, was, was launching. The vocational group met last night for the first time and I was really pleased. We, we had a meeting virtually. And so we are really focused on trying to come back together for our second meeting in person. But we had great feedback. Frank Cody, who's on the line with us today from our team and. Has a lot of experience in CVTEs helped me to sort of build the agenda. We did a lot of context setting around. You know, what's happening currently, what the workforce and economic data is telling us around needs. What our students are interested in. So really trying to sort of build a, a foundation. That will ultimately, you know, lead to what are the right vocational programs and pathways. To be offering in potentially a new merged high school. And that's really the question that we're digging into. So we're happy that we got some great representation from the community. We're going to continue to invite them in and. And I'm, I'm hoping that we'll have, you know, three or four meetings total and then bring you back some of the things that we've heard. That will supplement the work that we did in that big CVTE analysis, analysis report. That we published last March or so. So two basic groups moving forward. In the nine through twelve space, we haven't abandoned the idea of doing the pre-K through four and the five through eight. Right now, we actually don't have the money to support it, but if and when that community compact grant comes in. I think it's something we could look to doing after, after the first of the year. Um, the only other thing I want to mention is that, this is, this is a little bit of a. Want to, I want to offer this up in a very respectful way, but we're beginning to. Hold convenings of community members and open meeting, o, open forums that in which we invite. Community members, staff. And parents and students to come and share their thoughts and their experiences with us. We get into a little challenge when we have board member participation. And I say that again very respectfully because we have this issue of open meeting and quorums. And we had this issue come up and we did the community forum virtually. This past summer and I have to be honest with you, it was very clunky. To figure through all the postings and who was in the room and who wasn't in the room because we violate open meeting. When we have a quorum, either the full group or any subcommittee, which doesn't take a lot. The second thing I, I just have a little bit of a concern about is the ability for our community members to really just. Be heard and, and present. So. You know, I, I worry sometimes around having too many board members in an open community meeting. When we're really the goal is to hear from the community. So I'm saying this as a point of conversation and it's for you all to decide. I, obviously I, I follow your lead and I follow your direction, but we have a convening that we're about to post for, for December tenth. That will be held at the Sheffield Senior Center. And we're going to be doing another convening in January, I think the second or third week of January, we haven't, I, I think settled on a date. And we're going to be doing that in, in likely at the Great Barrington Senior Center, trying to sort of spread the connection points. Across the two districts. And so these will be open invites and folk can show up, but we do have this challenge of managing. The board membership and quorum. So I'll leave it at that and. Maybe pass it back to, to Lucy or any other, any other members who might have some feeling or thoughts on this.
Well, in terms of just the logistics and making sure we are compliant with the open meeting law. We can't have a quorum of a subcommittee show up without having posted the meeting. And so. We have to make sure we're not doing that. And so at a minimum. People should be letting Jake know beforehand. If they want to attend one of these meetings, so we can ensure, because a quorum of a subcommittee is three. Right? So we need to make sure that we don't have three members of any subcommittee at these community convenings and speaking. So that's number one. That's just sort of an open meeting compliance issue. And the, the second thing. I would just like to underscore is that these are community convenings to hear from community members. So. You know, having people there to answer specific factual questions from the planning board, I guess that's one thing, but. Sort of making presentations on the issues by planning board members. I think that's something we want to try to avoid. That's my own opinion. Deb and then Carl.
So my question is. If it's an open community meeting. I, I think there's a difference, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, between having more people in the same space and actual deliberation. So for me, if I come to one of those meetings, I come to observe. I mean, that's how I introduced myself last night and I come to observe. And I don't, is a quorum issue an issue if we're simply there listening? As opposed to engaging in conversation deliberation and all of that kind of stuff. Because my feeling is that if we are just coming to listen. I think the more of us adhere it, the better, among other things. And I'm just wondering how that sits with open meeting law. Because you can be in the same space as other people on your committee for. If other topics are, you know, if you're, if you're not deliberating. Anyway, that, that's my question.
Yeah, well, you're right, but, but then everyone has to be very disciplined, right? So if you're. And everyone is listening and not speaking on a matter within the jurisdiction of the planning board, we're fine. But if one person starts speaking and you're in the room, then we could have a problem. One planning board member. Carl?
Lucy. On, I'm following up really on, on Deb's comment. If you have a quorum of a subcommittee. At a meeting, a community meeting. And none of the, not, none or fewer than, well, no, it has to be either, it has to be none. None of those subcommittee members speak. To, to the community, to the members of the community. Isn't that still? Wouldn't that still be a violation of the open meeting law if, if that. If that meeting, if that community meeting had not been properly noticed and posted. Whether they speak or not. If you have a quorum of a, of a subcommittee. Of an organization that's subject to the open meeting law. It's a viol, in, in my view, it's a violation of the open meeting law if you do not properly post that in accordance with. With the law, with the open.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's right, Carl, but we have Russell on the phone, the expert and our counsel, so he can speak to it. I think there needs to be actually a deliberation on a matter within the jurisdiction of the board, but Russell, set us straight here.
Yeah, I agree with you. So. If you have a quorum of a public body in the same location with no discussion. Or deliberation, so you, it's, it could be verbal, but you also can't sit, you know, in a circle and all nod your heads yes. To something that is at issue. So you really have to have no deliberation at all. But as long as you do, you know, it's, you can go to public meetings, watch the public meeting, say nothing. There's a quorum. Present, you know, committee can go to a board meeting and just watch the board meeting together. As long as there, none of them are talking. The problem is if one person talks from the board and the other members are there, that could look like deliberation. You don't need to all speak, just like in a committee meeting, sometime, many times there are votes and there's only one person that spoke on the topic. But. But if all of you were present and you actually didn't speak or make any of the other cues, like you were agreeing with each other. Then I would say it doesn't need to be posted. It's just as Lucy's saying, it's very hard to do that correctly. And, and even if you do it correctly, it doesn't mean you're not going to have somebody in the community. File a complaint anyway. And then you gotta, you know, meet over that and defend it. So it's, it's better practice not to have a quorum present, but you do have a legal right to go to public meetings. Whether you're an elected official or not, as long as you're not deliberating. So it's, it's not a violation if you do that correctly.
Thanks, thanks Russell. Does that answer your question, Carl?
Yes and no. What it, it, it doesn't answer the question of posting and I, I know from. From experience that I've had at the MASC annual meeting in Hyannis. That if a quorum, and I'm not sure it's happened with, with the Southern Berkshire School Committee. I mean, I've been to a number of those annual meetings, but there are school committees that attend. That annual meeting where more than a quorum. Attend that conference and those ten, those school committees. Have told me that they have in, perhaps in excess of, of, of caution. Posted the fact that they will be attending that meeting for the three or four day period.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's what, what you just said, is, it's very hard to control. What everybody does in that meeting, right? So we could have an agreement. That no one's going to speak and then somebody speaks, we haven't posted the meeting and we've got a problem. What do you do, Don, Bonnie, and then Peter? Russell, you can, you can wrap up.
Non-problem. What counsel said is absolutely correct, but I want to add one thing. And that is if the error is made and somebody speaks. You always have to ask yourself in law, what, what happens as a result? And the answer is that all the, the attorney general does is say that the decision that was made at that. Quote deliberation is set aside and you have to post that issue. For discussion at another meeting. So even if it happens. The repercussion is unimportant and the other member or member. If it starts to happen, can walk out if they're concerned about them being held responsible under the law. And it certainly doesn't, I don't think. As running the, the meeting has any responsibility to bother with that. He should just hold the meeting.
Well, as Chair of the Planning Board, I don't want to be cited with a violation of the open meeting law. So while, while you're right, Don, that maybe there's going to be no effect of that violation. I think we should structure our meetings in a way that we can pretty much ensure we're not going to violate the open meeting law. Bonnie, then Frank, then Andy.
Thank you. This is the non-lawyer speaking. So my question is. If it were a meeting. Like, let's say last night's meeting where was mo- mostly industry people. And I'm assuming that meeting was posted. If anyone, if we had guidelines that everyone, you know, was approved by our U. And anyone on the planning board would be put into the attendees group. And only. Speak under. Public speak time. Does that in any way solve the problem? You shaking your head no?
It, it doesn't solve the problem if you're speaking. If you're in the attendee room and you're not speaking, great. But it's, and, and that could be our role. That could be uh, how we handle it. The planning board members. Attend in the attendee room and don't get promoted to the panel. That could be a solution, an easy solution to this. Frank, then Andy.
So when I was superintendent of schools down at the Cape, uh, our lawyer said, you know. Everybody can attend a public meeting and sit there and listen. Even if you nod, it, it, it makes it like you're making a statement. And he said. The problem that we have with that is after the meeting is where a couple of people get together and talk about it. Now, if you want to go home and call one person and say, what do you think? That's fine. There's just two of you talking, but he said. You know, wh- when, when your school board, and I had fifteen people on my school board, he said, when, when, when there's a five of them there. You know, they better be sitting there and not moving and not looking and not doing any body language, not nodding, not, because. He said someone will pick up on that and you will be violating something. And that was what our lawyer said. And so. I made sure that my, uh, chairperson knew that and he made sure that that happened. So just. Every little thing, every little nuance can be. You know, you're, you're making a statement and you're making a statement with other people if you have the quorum there. So.
That's what our lawyer, that's what our lawyer told us.
And that's what our lawyer is telling us tonight.
Yeah, and, and you know, just to, the, the key thing is appearance. I mean, we're really talking a lot about appearances here. As opposed to, you know, pretend potential real deliberation. And then the other aspect is, is that no one has mentioned another aspect of the open meetings law, which is, I'll put on my archivist hat here. Um, record keeping. So Carl's scenario of a, of a school committee. At a mask meeting in Hyannis, posting it. Sort of like this broad four day posting. They would have to be able to record. Any interactions and post those interactions. Uh, publicly, you know, the same way that, you know, the minutes of the, Christine will be put in the minutes of this meeting publicly. Um, that record keeping pieces is, is really. Problematic. So I, you know, I mean. I generally agree with most of the thoughts I've heard.
Patrick.
Uh, isn't the obvious solution that committee members should just stay away from these public meetings?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fine on a Zoom call to be an attendee because your face isn't there. And um, you're not permitted to speak as an attendee. So um, if people want to attend as an attendee. Uh, that's okay. But um, being promoted and speaking, it, it creates a lot of problems. Okay, uh, Bonnie, you have something additional?
Yeah, would this be a solution that if we're, we're having it recorded? And it goes on the website to be viewed if none of us attend? No, that doesn't work? That it's recorded and it's on the website and we could view it at another time?
Oh, yeah, I thought you meant recording as a substitute for posting and minutes. That doesn't work, but. Yeah, I, we could, I don't know, Jake, is that going to chill discussion to have those convenings recorded or not?
I, I don't know. I mean, I'm. I'm not a massive fan of that. I think we're asking people to come together. Um, in just a, a couple of events, um. Where we're going to have an interactive dialogue and. Um, I, I would, I don't know, a minute you pull out cameras and you tell people you have to, okay, that this is being recorded. Um. It, it does change the dynamic a bit. So. I mean, I think right now we're just trying to get feedback from the community and I'm, I'm not opposed to. Having a board rep um. In the room. Um, I mean, I'm, I, I, I'm not, that's actually not what I'm arguing for. I think we have to just be intentional about it. So. We have on December twelfth, December tenth. A, 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 of in-person convening and I would be more than happy to have a, a board member there. I just, what I'm cautioning against is last night we were one away from being in violation. Of open meeting.
So then Jake, what happens, I'm sorry, um, what happens if tomorrow the Bar Foundation people are coming? To. Um, Southern Berkshire. To hear from the community. What would happen then if? Like education is such a small subcommittee now, what would happen if? Two of us showed up. As community members to that, that posted bar. Foundation interviewing community members. Does that then become an issue? Because it's the Bar Foundation people are recording, what if, and not. Not, uh, tape recording, but or video.
Right.
Do we wind up with violations then? Will we wind up with community gatherings like that?
Well, the answer is yes. Right? If you, if you have a quorum in the room, you violated open meeting and you're deliberating about. Topics related to a potential merger, which is what they're going to be talking about. So I think that. Maybe the bottom line here is that the board has. Got to be intentional, have a certain degree of policing itself. Um, when it comes to these open community meetings. Um, so, yeah, but I mean, we have two that are going to be intentionally scheduled. I know, you know, again, and, and I raised this topic today. Primarily um, to, you know, try to avoid this from, from being a problem, those particular events.
So then what could we do? Who would therefore act tomorrow morning, let's say, if? I don't know, I'm just looking who's southern, if Nadine, myself, uh, Lucy all showed up. Carl all showed up tomorrow morning.
At risk of being a little rude, um, and I'm sorry if I offend anyone. But we have this forum to discuss in. And I think that because we have this forum to discuss in, we really need to leave the public forums. To happen without our voices. Um, that, that's just my, my opinion. But we get to talk about it here and we get a report on what happens. In these open meetings and then we get to discuss what we hear. And I think. That means that we should keep our voices out of that conversation, of, of those public conversations. That's my own opinion.
Making a motion to that?
I was not going to make a motion. I was just expressing an opinion. I can't if anyone would like me to.
I, I just think, a, a, and I'm being rude in terms of, you know, just, we should have a guideline that keeps. Us safe. And even though, you know, we could say, you know, no one's turning around and finding us four thousand dollars. Lucy's right. We don't want to besmirch the organ, the group. So we might be better off with a formal guideline that we all follow. In connection with these meetings, especially given what Jake said, the nature of the meetings. Is such that we could wind up putting ourselves in trouble.
Peter?
Yeah, I, I, I would. Agree with what Deb said. I think, you know, we've placed the value on listening to the community throughout this process and we. Have some upcoming opportunities and we want to make sure those voices are heard. And it seems like we need a resolution of that to the principle that. Bonnie's talking about right now. And so. It's not clear to me, though, as we've debated this with people who are much more familiar with the open meeting law, if that principle has to be that we completely refrain from attending to make sure that there is no possibility. Of a violation, or if they are on Zoom, we just are, are just attendees and we're not promoted. Um, but it seems like it's a mix of those two things and. Um, if indeed we're gonna. Adhere to that value of hearing from community input. I, I don't want to repeat that, but I think she's spot on that. We get a chance to review. What is shared in those. Open meetings and also discuss them uh, as a board. So we should, we should err on the side of hearing the community's voice.
So Russell, can you just confirm that if we had a motion that was made, seconded and passed? That uh, board members could attend community convenings as attendees on Zoom. But not speak, not be promoted uh, to the session. Uh, that that would insulate us from any open meeting law. Uh, accusation, open meeting law violation accusation.
So, yes, that would be an appropriate motion. Um, the only caveat I will give you is that also means no texting amongst each other. There has to be no communication during the meeting.
Yeah.
So you can, you would have to, with that caveat, yes, that would work.
So would someone like to make that motion?
I would make that motion.
Look, Pete, I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion of the motion?
Yeah. I'd like to amend the, the emotion by adding that uh, we uh, direct Jake not. To be responsible for enforcing. Uh, this process.
What does that mean, Don?
It means that the standards that people ask of. Are provided by the, by the law, by the open meeting law. The meeting should just take place. Jake should run the meeting. If a subcommittee makes the mistake. Of deliberating, then it exposes that subcommittee. To the Attorney General on an open meeting law complaint. It's their problem. It's not the whole board's problem. So I really think. We're spending too much time on this and ought to move on. I think we should simply. Jake not to try to enforce this. And. Uh, and ask that all members comply with the open meeting law. Which it is their responsibility by the way to read and know.
Okay, I'm struggling with the amendment, Don. Is it necessary?
Well, Ja- Jake seems to be feeling that he has to do something when he perceives this as happening. And I, I think we should make it clear to him that no, that's not his responsibility.
Okay, so would, would it be fair to restate your proposed amendment that um? All planning board members agree to adhere by this rule? And uh, it's not up to our project manager to police the role?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment?
I'd like to, well, I'd like to change it slightly.
Well, let's see if there's a second to the amendment.
I'll second it and then bring up my point.
Okay.
My point is there are times where Jake may not be the person. So I'd like it to be. That the individual um. Named as the convener or the chair of whatever meeting not be held. Responsible for policing whatever Don said.
I accept that amendment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, so we're gonna have to vote on the amendment and then on the motion as amended. Uh, any more discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, Lucy, for this, I regret having to extend this, but it seems like the, the one thing that we might want to cover in our actions tonight are the. Open forums that are in person, because it seems like. Those, based on what I understand, are problematic if we even. Show up and inadvertently. Do something. That could put us at risk of violation. So it seems like we also need a motion, or at least to amend the motion, that we refrain from attending. Public in-person meetings, recognizing that we'll get access to the, what is shared and can discuss what's shared afterwards. But it seems like we need to have some. Uh. Some. Motion around that as well. Do others concur?
Andy?
I, 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 I'm, I'm actually sort of gobsmacked by the whole conversation, frankly. Uh, this is, this is angels on the head of a pin. We, we can, we're all adults. We just say we're not, I mean, obey the law. And we've talked about the law at length. I don't think we need a motion. I think we're all adults and I think we're. Pretty intelligent adults. So I'm going to give everybody that one. So. There I am.
All right, so Andy's asking. All the people who made motions to withdraw their motions and simply obey the law. John?
Well, I'll second that. You know, I think Don does have a point, which is, let's say a meeting is convened. It's a, it's another public body that is convening the meeting. If two members of a subcommittee show up. The violation doesn't pertain to the entire meeting. It pertains to the two individuals who showed up on a subcommittee. And I think uh, um. That it's beyond our capacity to do any more than make a recommendation. A motion is meaningless. It's, it doesn't mean anything. They can still do it. And I also agree with Don that we can't ask the moderator, whoever it is, to police this. Uh, so I would, I would love to see all the motions withdrawn. I really don't think we have any more time for this. And I'm sorry, we even spent any time on it. We really have to, uh, we have, we have, we have to start looking at our district agreement here. So I'm, I, I, I would, I hope that we can just move forward.
Okay, just, just a point of clarification, John. I do not think these community convenings are posted. Uh, open meetings. They're not, they're not, they're not.
In that case, it's even, it's even less important because at least. At least the overriding committee meeting is not subject to the open meeting law itself. So they're not going to be taken to task and they're not going to have to. Either redo something or explain themselves. So that, that's even less reason to worry, to worry about this.
Well, yeah, the reason we're worried about it is that we got dangerously close to violating the open meeting law. I don't know if it was last night or the night before, Jake. Um, and so it's important to have the discussion.
I agree, I agree. We've had the discussion.
Yeah, so um. Let's, let me poll the group to see if they want to withdraw their motions.
I'll withdraw.
You're withdrawing yours. Peter, are you withdrawing yours?
Yes.
And Deb, are you withdrawing yours?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we have a consensus that. Without a motion, that planning board members will not uh, participate. In our community convenings by speaking. Um, that they can attend the meetings as attendees. Uh, if they're Zoom meetings, but if they're in-person meetings, they shouldn't be attending. I think that's the consensus. Julie?
I, I just want to clarify as an attending advisory person, that I am not included in any of the counts for quorums. If I wish to go to the Sheffield Senior Center or attend. I'm not bound by any of this.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Bonnie, and then we really do need to move on.
Um, I'm just requesting that you, as our chair, communicate this to anyone. On the planning board who is not present or who will be newly appointed.
Okay, I think I'll have that done through council. Um.
Thank you as long.
I think that's the way to do it. Okay, let's move on. Um, I did want to. Reserve ninety minutes for our. Uh, continuation of discussion of the draft eight town regional district agreement and we've lost. And we've lost a good chunk of those 90 minutes, so so let's just move forward with that. I noticed that for some reason, approval of the minutes was not on the agenda. I'm not sure how that happened. But you did get the October 25 minutes. We want to prove them tonight because that wasn't on the agenda. We'll we'll do that at our next meeting. But you do have them and I hope you've reviewed them so you've refreshed your memory on what it was we discussed at that meeting, which was, I think everyone agreed, a very productive and positive meeting. There were a couple of legal questions that were asked at the end of that meeting that I'd like Russell to address at the outset. And then we'll dive right in. So Russell, the two questions that I believe John Silbert raised were, number one, does there need to be a two-thirds vote of the school committee on a budget? And I think we all agreed at the last meeting that the answer to that was yes, but I'd like you to confirm that. And also whether there needs to be a two-thirds vote of the member towns to approve a budget. So those were the two legal questions that were raised at our last meeting.
Yes, so it is a two-thirds vote at the school committee level. It's one of the few votes that's required to be two-thirds of a committee. And then as far as the towns, I sent you the email about that, which I don't have in front of me. But I think I think the answer was in fact that it had to be two-thirds of the member towns as well.
Right. So the the answer to your question, John, was yes, is yes, needs to be two-thirds school committee and two-thirds towns.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right, so Jake, do you want to put up your slide summarizing our discussions last time and then we can get into the substance? Julie, your hand's up. Is that from before?
I have.
Okay, Don?
As I was trying to get ready for tonight, I was trying to reread the entire entire draft. And and I was finding it's very complex and very difficult to do that. And what I'd like you to consider, Lucy, is giving us notice in advance, substantially in advance of a meeting, which sections of the agreement we're going to discuss? And narrowing it down and using your judgment as to how much we can do in one meeting, rather than having to come to the meeting feeling the need to be prepared to address anything that's in the agreement.
Okay, yeah, fair, fair request. At the end of that October meeting, I think I said we were going to continue the discussion of the school committee composition question. And that is what we're going to do today. So it's, if we have time, we're also going to talk about the transition committee section, which I think I had highlighted at the last meeting, but maybe I didn't. But I will do that in the future, Don. Thanks for that suggestion. Okay, Jake? What happened to your slide?
Sorry. All right, there's the slide. Do you want me to walk people through this, Lucy?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I just thought it would be helpful for people, especially the new members of our board, to get an overview of how this draft came into being. It's it's not something that Jake and I drafted. I just think it's very important that folks understand the genesis of this draft agreement.
Sure, so before the end of last fiscal year, we conducted with the support of the board, the Mass Association of Regional Schools, to help us to create a general outline for a, what it's a template or boilerplate regional agreement. There are parts of a regional agreement that are standard. There's a contemporary way that Partner Ed likes to think about regional agreements and Mars is very helpful in assisting us in developing the overview, the framework, the table of contents. In addition, they also helped us to spell out some of the basic decision points in different ways of approaching those decision points. Case in point, school committee composition, assessment methodologies. And part of that work in the first draft that we developed with their support was also looking at what the districts are doing currently. So we wanted to understand what both districts were doing currently and then where there were other potential alternative approaches that we might consider. So that first markup was really what ended up being the boilerplate draft agreement that you all saw a few meetings ago now. In addition to that, we are working, as you know, he's on the line today with our counsel, Russell Dupre, who is reviewing the various elements of the regional agreement and advising us on sort of legality of the language and the editing that relate to that. So every meeting, we are doing slight adjustments based on the feedback that we're getting from the board. So we're sort of moving through the boilerplate to the full board review. We made a decision to really have the the full board review the draft agreement and the elements of it. I think Don's point tonight is a good one and sort of focusing on particular things, which we're trying to do. And then I think focusing on those decision points and reaching consensus. So as we do that, we'll make adjustments to the drafts. We're going to start color coding things so we can look at things, you know, identify things which we need to act on and then where there are issues that we've closed or reached consensus on, sort of code those with a different color. So as we send drafts out, folks will understand what we're done with, what we're continuing to work on. In addition to that, we're getting feedback from people. You all, probably many of you received feedback from Renee Wood, who's, I think, in the attendee side of the meeting tonight. And so we certainly encourage feedback from folks on the on the drafts and we can continue to incorporate those in. If anyone reaches consensus, then ultimately there'll be a vote by the board on the regional agreement. And if that vote is affirmative, as you all know, that'll get sent to the towns for a vote. Does that help, Lucy?
Yeah.
Great.
So, next slide.
Yeah, next slide are just some of the key decision points, and this is just a selection of those that we'll be working on, the name of the of the of the district. Obviously, the governance structure, which you've been talking about, the apportionment of costs, which is really the work that's being previewed and worked through at the at the finance subcommittee. And then things around transition periods, school closures, how we deal with intra-district choice. You heard tonight on that transportation study that we looked at two options. One was students attending the school that they currently attend, another is attending the school that's closest to them, but there is that third rail of kids having choice or families having choice and where their kids go to school. And so those are some of the things we'll be talking through that you're already talking through. So do you want me to go to the next slide? Because this is sort of where you all left off and I was unfortunately not able to come to the last meeting. But you all did some polling on school committee options. And in addition to the polling, there were some additional variations which were presented by members which were captured in the minutes. And we have hopefully summarized on this slide that's in front of you right now.
Yeah, so maybe I should just talk through those so everyone has their memory refreshed on on what we talked about and what we didn't talk about in any depth at the last meeting. So three A was the 11 committee member, each with a single vote, one each from Alford, Monterey, Nomalboro, Egremont, Stockbridge, three from Great Barrington and two from Sheffield. So that was the three A option. Nadine offered a variation on that three A option, which was to have the two from Sheffield reduced to one from Sheffield and increasing the Great Barrington resident membership to four. And this was actually in response to a comment Jane Burke made, which was the 11 committee member composition of three A would result in there being more committee members resident in the Southern Berkshire towns than in the Berkshire Hills towns and a concern about the optics of that. So that was Nadine's suggestion that we vary three A by possibly swapping a Sheffield member for a Great Barrington member. Or I think I said that wrong, but increasing the Great Barrington membership by one and reducing the Sheffield membership by one. And then Patrick had a variation on three A, which was we have a 12-person committee rather than an 11 and an additional seat for Great Barrington. So Sheffield wouldn't be reduced to two, but there'd be an additional seat for a Great Barrington resident with a composition of 12. So we didn't vote in our straw poll temperature check on either the Nadine variation or the Patrick variation. And I thought it important that we have some discussion tonight about whether there's significant support for other of these variations. So that's three A. I think I should say at the outset that we've actually made a lot of progress on the school committee composition because we we are talking about district-wide elections for school committee members. So we've made that decision. And the elections would be at the biennial elections in the respective towns. So district-wide and the the number of school committee members that is under consideration based on all the options that we discussed at our last meeting is anywhere from 10 to 13. So that's the range we were considering as possible, 10 to 13, three A is 11. Except Patrick's variation, three A is 12 with an additional seat for Great Barrington. Three A prime, which was the variation that Peter Dillon offered, was the same composition as three A, but an extra member for Stockbridge and Great Barrington. So that's a 13-member board. And then three A double prime was 13 members on the board with the same composition as three A, but with two additional members who would be elected at large with no residency requirement. And I think there are a number of people who voice support for this at-large concept for at least some number of school committee members. So that's what three A is. And then Roger, at the very end of the meeting, during the public comment period, suggested a different approach. And that was either to have an eight-member committee, one from each town, or a 10-member committee, one from each town, but two at-large members. So the the three sort of variations that we didn't really discuss in depth and didn't do our temperature check on are the Nadine variation, the Patrick variation and the Roger proposal. And I wanted to give people an opportunity to discuss those possible variations before we move on. Because the goal here is to find a school committee composition that everyone would rank as either their first or second choice. We're not going to get everyone to rank the same composition as choice number one. But if we can find a school committee composition that everyone ranks as one or two in terms of their choices, if everyone can live with one of these variations, I think then we can move on. So with that sort of long-winded introduction, I'm gonna open the floor. Marie, Steve's got your hand up.
Okay, it doesn't have to do with the choices there, but if you're going to be putting this on the website, you forgot to put West Stockbridge in there.
I'm sorry.
Just just a minor thing, just if you're gonna post it, you should include us.
That's not so minor. Apologies for that. Okay, Nadine?
I just want to touch base on my my shift of one member from Sheffield to Great Barrington. There was a comment made during that meeting that at some point we need to stop talking about this district as southern, how many from Southern Berkshire and so many, how many from Berkshire Hills? And I totally agree with that, with that comment. I think we we do have to have to stop that conversation as we're trying to present this as a united district. So while my my proposal was to ease the concern of, you know, there being an imbalance of votes, I'm happy to withdraw that variation if other people don't think it has any value. Because I really truly believe that the way both school committees currently work is how the new school committee will work, and that is that it doesn't matter what town the school committee members come from. Every one of them is there to serve the children of the district. And just like both districts currently now have votes across the town, everybody gets a chance to vote for everybody else's representatives. So I I don't really feel that any of the school committee members are representing a specific town. So I don't really think it matters if if anybody can support that position.
Okay, thank you. Colin, you weren't at our our meeting last time, so I'd be really interested in in your view of Nadine's variation and all of these options more generally.
Thanks. For some reason, I remember this stuff, though, so I don't know where I came across it then if I wasn't at the meeting. But I I was gonna speak to exactly what Nadine was saying. I am thinking about this after we've completed this and there'll be one district, there won't be two different districts. So I would be more in favor of weighting the membership based on town size, if that's the way people wanted to do it. But I really do like Roger's idea of one, one member from each town and then a select number of at-large. And but I I and I don't know what to say about this, but I think maybe an odd number might be better there. So either one or three at-large. How many members are in each of the the districts now on each of those two school boards?
10, 10 on each.
Oh, all right, so they're already even. Okay, well, maybe it doesn't matter then. I just, I always thought that it was good to have an odd number to break any ties, but I think one from each town plus some at-large would be my first choice. And my second choice would be to choose the number from each town based on the size of the town, not the district that it's in.
Well, which of which of these three A, three A prime, three A double prime would be your second choice? Are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that Rogers, one from each town.
Yeah.
Plus the at-large would be my first choice.
Right.
And then I guess, I think the three A was trying to do it based on town size is my perception of what that was.
Yeah, it was, but three A double prime is sort of roughly the same as three A, but adds two at-large members.
Okay.
Which could come from any town.
That would be like combination. Yeah, that I guess that, you know, I would be open to that as well. I like the at-large piece. How would that be handled, though, if no one stepped up to the plate to run? Normally it goes back to the moderator to appoint someone. Would it just be a first come, first served from the towns? In other words, if we didn't have an at-large person, what town, how would that be decided? Would a town put forward a a moderator say, hey, I've got someone I'm putting forward this person for the for the at-large, the open at-large piece?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't. Yeah, it's a good question. I don't know. How that would work. Maybe the at large seats would be empty. I'm not sure. Haven't, it's a really good question. Haven't thought that through.
We, we could put language in the agreement. Could be the school committee, remaining members of the school committee could be. We would just have to put language in the regional agreement to cover it. But there would have to be a selection. It wouldn't be left vacant.
Okay. Okay, I think I saw Peter Dillon's hand up and.
No, Russ got what I was saying that, that, that there could be language to. To fill the vacancy, the remaining members of the school committee.
Okay, well, how about we sort of go, uh, Don's got his hand up and then let's sort of go around the room and. Just talk about whether people are interested in. Exploring Rogers' proposal more. I, I, I thought it was a very interesting proposal. It wasn't one I had. Thought about, um. And I sort of liked the ten member committee. With one member from each town to at large. And I, I just wanna know if other. Members of the board, I, I know Colin is interested in it, but. Are other members of the board interested in pursuing that approach? So let's start with Don and then John.
I think there are a few things that we should keep in mind. One. The size of the committee. I think we should separately decide the size. And I think to go beyond eleven. Is to create a committee that's gonna have more trouble. Uh, deliberating and be more difficult for the superintendent to deal with. I think we should respect the fact that people will generally understand. That the biggest towns. Great Barrington and Sheffield. ought to have. A little more say because so many more of their children will be going to the school. And, um, I think that people will have trouble. Understanding the idea of. At large members. And that. The problem of solving it by having the school board appoint them or something like that is gonna be troublesome to people. Uh, so. Uh, in my view, the simplest, clearest. One that is closest to what we have now is three A. And I think we should do that.
Okay, John.
So I'm in favor of. Have either of Kavanaugh's proposals. And there's a couple of reasons for that having to do with. Same reason why I asked about the two thirds votes. Uh, and this, this is, uh, nobody should take this as a cynical assessment. It's just, it's just a numerical fact. And I'm not putting any spin on it, but. Three A. Would allow for Great Barrington and one other voter to kill a budget. Three A prime. Would allow again for Great Barrington and any one other vote to kill a budget. Three A double prime. Allows potentially Great Barrington to kill a budget. If they end up with some of the. At large. Without any other town. Eight, uh, eight member board with a six to two, two thirds majority would take three towns to kill a budget. But they'd be three different towns. Any three different towns. Ten people with two at large. Would be similar, however, with a seven to three vote. If one or the, but two of the at large end up coming from Great Barrington. Then again. Only one other town can kill a budget. Now, am I saying this will ever happen? No, am I saying we can, we should ignore the possibility? Uh, I don't think we should ignore the possibility. Um, those of us in Southern Berkshire with long memories. Know. How politicized votes can be at the school committee level depending on the composition of the board. And. The reason why I think that eight is the best. Even though it may be too few. Is because. I, it's because each town has a vote. And I think that's the way it needs to be. I know there are bigger towns and smaller towns. But it's way more complicated than that. It's just, it's not just a matter of how many kids you have in the district. It, it's also a matter of your ability, your town's ability to pay. And in my view. The town that's most disadvantaged in almost any of these scenarios is Sheffield. Because Sheffield relative to its budget and to its. Uh, ability to pay. Is the most constrained. And. So. I understand the Great Barrington deserves, uh, I understand the idea that they deserve a bigger voice because they're a bigger town. But they also have a bigger pocketbook. So, um, I really think that you can't view it narrowly as just. Uh, how many kids have you got? Um, Sheffield's got more kids proportionally than, than their, um. Than their levy. Monterey has less kids and Alford and Egremont, uh, but they have a bigger levy. And, uh, New Marlborough is somewhere in the middle. Uh, between Sheffield and the three other towns. And you can do the same analysis for Stockbridge and West Stockbridge and Great Barrington. So for my money, again, which I said at the last meeting, you want to avoid. The worst case scenario because it will happen. And what I'm trying to do is not deny Great Barrington a greater presence. I'm trying to eliminate the possibility of any politicizing on the board. Other than one town, one vote. So that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, Andy, I saw your hand up. Is it, is it, is it still up or did it come down?
Well, it came down, but I will say that, uh, I mean, uh, as John put it. The, it is always possible. In my six years, I. You know, frankly, never considered. I mean, we never came anywhere near or close to. Disapproving a budget. Yeah, we had some. Hard conversations about. Relative. Willingness to, you know. Propose taxes, send taxes back to the town, but. Never saw anybody come, I mean, it was always about the, the quality of the education. We might send a budget back to the administration to make some. Fine tuning, but. I don't know. I. I, and I understand, I, I, I do remember. Reading about. Our friends in Southern Berkshire Regional School District and some of the stuff that has.
Yeah, I was on, I was on the school committee at that time at Southern Berkshire and I believe. We had appointed members, so it was a very different. Way of, um, constituting. The school committee. So, so school committee members were appointed. By the select boards and that some felt at least made them much more beholden. Uh, to the views of the respective select boards of the, of the five towns than. When you have district wide voting, not in a pointed system. Um, a little bit less sort of under the control of the select board, but yeah, it certainly did happen. Uh, where we had it by based on, you know, town composition. Um. Anyone else want to speak Rogers? Uh, either eight member committee or ten member committee. Proposal, because I wanna know if there is. A consensus that this is a serious. Possibility that might change people's number one or number two vote because. We didn't have that in the mix when we took our, our. Temperature check at the last meeting. So may, should I just go around the room and see what people think? Does that make sense, Peter Taylor?
I'll start us off. I, I don't think I have anything to share more than others, but. I wanna go back to something that Don shared. He said. People. Would, I forget how you phrase it, Don, people would. Expect that there would be more representation. From the larger towns, um, given the number of kids that are being served by the district and. My question is, would they not just expect it, but is it, you know, politically short sighted of us not to assume that they would. Expect it when they are considering this. This. Proposal to merge. Into an eight town district that that proportional representation would be important for the voters of Great Barrington. To the voters of the larger towns to be able to have that proportional. Uh, positioning on the school committee. I believe that that's what is, how it's reflected now in school board composition. And I'm just concerned that. While Rogers' proposal, I think speaks to. Um, important values of equity. And I think John raised some really good example, examples of how. It could help on the budget process. I'm just. I'm just concerned about the political ramifications as this ultimately has to be approved by. By the, the citizens in each of the town. And will they see it as, as something that. Is not in their best interest in the long term.
Yeah, I, I think it's important to, to. Highlight that this would be a pretty radical change. From what we currently have in both districts. Steve Bannon?
Yeah, I just wanna agree with Peter. I think we're going to make changes. Many changes. That we have no choice but to make. And this is one we do have a choice. And I think that. Um, he's right, politically, this could be something that could affect the final outcome. And I, I do think there is some expectation that the voting would be weighted proportionally by town.
Okay, Colin. And then John.
Um, boy, uh, between John and Peter. You both made really good points. Um, and, um. I guess, um. I'm also struggling with the fact that. We also said that, that, uh, these members represent. The district wide, even though they come from a town, so. Um, but I see, um, Peter, what you're saying is the expectation. And maybe people, people don't understand. That even though someone might be coming from another town, they're still supposed to be representing. All the towns. Um, so I don't know what to do. I, I've just, I, I. I do like that fair. Um, that sort of one, one town, one vote piece because. It, it does equalize everything for the little towns. Um, and doesn't allow the, the bigger towns to. Well, I guess it's only Great Barrington is, is, is John was pointing out, but anyway, that. We all are, if we're on a school committee, we're supposed to be representing all the towns in the district. But I also rep, uh, uh, recognize the, um, expectation and I don't know how we get around that expectation.
Okay, John, and then I'm gonna actually go around the room and see, um, who would support. Rogers' eight or ten. School committee member competence, composition as either their one or two vote. One or two rankings. So John, you go.
So I, 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 I don't want to, um. Again, I'm trying to stick to the numbers and I, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna be, uh. Feel like anyone feels I'm being. Uh, antagonistic about any of this, but, but, uh. Especially Steve Bannon, who I used to meet with at the bottom of bills in the basement. Talk about merging twenty years ago because if we were seen in public, we would have been, uh, we would have been assassinated. Um, but, um, but I really, I really think that, um. That we, that the, the perception that we're designing our recommendation because any one town might. Kill the whole thing is, I think that in itself is a little dangerous. To speak about. Uh, that's precisely what we're trying to avoid. Of course, we want to get the best thing we can forward to the towns to be passed. But, um, part of our job is to persuade people that we, we are offering the best thing, right? So if we all agree that fairness is the best thing. Then we ought to be presenting that to the towns. And I think we need to take that risk because that's our ethical responsibility. And so, you know, between the eight and the ten, I'm a little more neutral because the ten. Effectively might allow for three members to be from Great Barrington and is likely because they have the most district wide voting, the biggest block. But I think either one is good. And I think if ten. Results in Steve being able to sell this to his constituents. At the end of the day, because they might effectively have more representation than the other towns, and that's good too.
Yeah, I think that's why Roger proposed the ten. Um, okay, Bonnie and then Julie, and then I'm, uh, mindful of time. I'd really like to. Do a straw poll around the room.
Um, my only comments of one, I think. Don, about twenty minutes ago, put it really, uh, clearly in, in my terms, um, for. For three, the basic. Three A and the apportionment, as was said. And I think Peter Taylor just made an incredibly important point. Having spoken to several of our town clerks. The worst part they say that they deal with, with voting all the time are the school committees. And. I think it's very easy, and maybe I'm saying it from a Sheffield perspective. It's very easy to stir up what we don't want and lose. Lose sight of the greater picture over this question of. School committee composition. So that's why I continue to support the basic three A. And with three A, three double prime is my second.
Okay. Julie?
Um, I just wanted to say, I think that, um, Peter and, and Steve both made really good points. And while John, I can agree with you, we wish we could put forward fairness. I do think having some semblance of waiting is important. So while I am not a voting member. If I were a voting member, I would either wanna look at three A or that three A white amendment. Um, that would give Great Barrington the fourth seat if that's something that Steve and others in Great Barrington or Berkshire Hills think might be necessary. Um, but I do like the basic three A.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I apologize Julie that we didn't poll you last time. That was my oversight. So I, I'm gonna go around the room and ask everyone. Whether Rogers' proposal. Uh, either with eight or ten. Uh, would be in your top two. Because if, if most say no, then I think we put that to, to the side. Um, if, if. A majority say yes, then I think we have to keep discussing it. So, uh, Don. Rogers, either eight or ten, is that now in your top two?
Political depth. No.
No. Okay, Julie.
No.
Tara?
Yes.
Bonnie? Bonnie? Can you unmute?
I am muted myself. Sorry. No.
No, okay. Peter Taylor?
No.
Uh, Susan Smith?
Um, yes, only the ten option, not the eight option.
Okay. Uh, Nadine?
No.
Uh, John?
Uh, ten is good for me.
Okay, Jim?
Yes. Uh, preferably the ten.
Okay. Uh, Colin?
Kavanaugh, ten.
Okay. Uh, Steve Bannon?
Uh, no.
Marie?
No.
Andy?
Nah.
Nancy?
Yes, on, um, on, on either the ten or the.
Yes, on, um, on, on either the 10 or the eight.
Okay. Uh, Deb.
Um, no.
Chuck. Chuck, Captain, are you still with us?
No, Chuck left at 6:45.
Okay. Uh, Carl.
Uh, no.
Okay, and I, I'd like to, um, also poll the superintendent, Peter Dillon.
I'm, I'm really torn on this. Um, I, I, I like the number of 10 or 11, and I don't like the number of 13. So I, I think there's some merit in it, but I realize the political realities of it as well.
So that's, uh, a soft no.
Or, or a soft yes, depending on, on one's perspective. It's anonymous, I'm sorry.
Tore. Okay, and that.
Uh, I have a similar, um. Soft something. Um, I think I love the concept of, um, you know, an even. Distribution and making it one big district, but I don't think politically it's gonna sell, so.
Okay. All right, did, who did I miss?
Lucy, we missed you.
Before we get to me, who else did I miss? Nobody? Okay, um, I, I guess I'm a, I'm a reluctant no. Um, I really like the idea, but I think politically it's a very tough sell. Just because it's so radically different from what we currently have in either district. So we've got, um, just on this soft temperature check, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six. Six yeses. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, 10, 11 no. So do we take it off the table? I think so, unless people want to keep talking about it.
I think that was a really thoughtful conversation. I just have to say I, I appreciated everything that everybody said, so.
Yeah, it's, it's really hard, right? It's, it's hard. It's, these are not easy questions to solve. But I think we did a really good job talking it through. Um, so that's off, and then we've got the Patrick White variation. Patrick, do you want to, are you still on with us or no? I think we should talk about it. I think three A prime is probably off the table based on our discussion. At the last meeting unless. Really any of our new members. Want to speak to that, um, in favor of that. But I think what's left now is three A, Patrick's variation on three A and three A double prime. So does anyone want to speak to Patrick's proposal? All right, well, maybe what we do is, um, at our next meeting, when Patrick's with us. We, we actually do, uh, ranked voting of those three. Uh, proposals. Um. Unless people feel that, that Patrick's 12 person committee should not still be in the running. Um, I think he felt strongly that it would help a lot. To sell this, to have one additional seat for Great Barrington on the committee. Um, and we're still under 13. Um, I think 13 is probably the maximum size we want to go based on the discussion.
And yet the, the folks from, from Great Barrington are, seem satisfied with the three. So I don't know why we're considering a fourth.
I would agree with Don, and I think, you know, since we had that leaning, I mean, I was a pretty soft no on the. Kavanaugh proposal also because I like the idea of fairness, and I think that adding another seat for Great Barrington makes it less fair. Um, and I'm not in favor of making it less fair. So I would take it off the table.
Okay.
And then, and then.
Um, let me just, um. Sorry to cut you off. Let me just ask whether there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of keeping Patrick's variation on the table. Are you seeing any hands, Jake? I, I've lost my hand capability here.
John has his hand up?
Not on this.
Not on this? Okay, so let's take the white variation off the table, Jake. And so what we're left with is, um, three A and three A double prime, which is. Where we sort of were landing last time. Um, and I don't think we need to take a vote on. The choice between those two tonight. Um, but I think it's good that we have now identified the two top contenders. And you have your hand up for something else?
I'd just like to comment. As people think about three A double prime. That it's got two problems. It increases the size of the board unnecessarily from 11 to 13. And it introduces the concept of at large additional members with no residency requirement. Which is a concept foreign to all of these communities. And which they will have difficulty understanding and will be suspicious of. And I think those considerations ought to urge folks towards three A, um, up above.
Okay, John.
Uh, so I agree with Don on that specific thing, and, um. I, I, I honestly don't know that we're really doing this the way we should be doing it. Shouldn't be doing straw polls on a single option here without doing a straw poll on all the other single options as single options. Because we're basically just pulling somebody, uh, you know, out of the crowd and putting them on the firing line before we've discussed the rest of them. Six votes in favor of, of Kavanaugh's 10 is, it's, it's nothing to sneeze at if you reduce the no votes to thus just the 24 potential voters. And also you add in the people who did not vote on the committee tonight, on the board tonight. We haven't really discussed the other ones, the way we've discussed Kavanaugh, and I suspect as Don has already put forward. That three A prime, double prime may go down in flames with less support even than Kavanaugh. So, and, and, and so what's wrong with three or even four choices that we rank as, as a board? To vote on, as a planning board, rather than picking some off. Rather indiscriminately, and then assuming that we're all, and then letting people only have two choices. If we're gonna, if we're gonna do ranked voting, let's do ranked voting.
So what, what is it you're proposing, John?
Well, my proposal would have been to spend more, not to have voted on Kavanaugh, but to spend more time on three A double prime. Because that could very well be less popular than that. And then if you've got three, that's what we go, that's what we vote on.
Well, three A double prime got the most votes for number one and number two at our last meeting. By far, there were 19.
I understand, I understand that, I understand that.
So I, I don't know why you think that one's gonna go down in flames. I'm just trying to, to get us. I mean, maybe this isn't the best way to do it, but I, I think hearing everybody speak about why they support one. Or another and trying to get people thinking about. Whether they can accept their number two choice, even if they don't get their number one choice. I think is a constructive way to have this discussion. I had hoped it would be a constructive way to have this discussion.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I just think that Kavanaugh has been treated differently. And all of the things being equal, there's no reason not to have three, three possibilities in our final vote. That's all.
Okay, Dan.
I, I actually, I agree with, with John. Um, we. Three A double prime got a lot of votes, but Kavanaugh wasn't in the mix when we voted on it.
True.
So I would agree with him, and I think there were enough of us with that soft no. That. When we actually do our ranked voting, it, it would not be a bad idea to have the Kavanaugh, particularly the Kavanaugh with 10, because that's what I kept hearing.
Yeah, me too. So let's put, um, Jake, let's put Kavanaugh with 10 back in. And maybe at our next meeting, we'll do ranked voting on those three. Is that satisfactory to everyone?
I think so.
Okay, great. All right, I, we're getting close to the end. We're actually over the end. So I do want to open up the floor to public comments. I. Um, I think we had a really good discussion again. I know there might be some frustration that we're still on this one issue. But it obviously is an important one, so it's worth the discussion. Um. Um, do you have something more before we go to what comments? No, okay, um. Let's see if there are any hands up. I don't see any hands up. I see. Joan is here. Hi, Joan. Renee is here. Chris is here. Jim, I don't know who Jim is, um, but I don't see any hands, so I'll take a. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any.
Like, I'd like to thank Renee for her in-depth comments that we will look at as we move forward. I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate them.
Yes, absolutely. And I'm, I'm sorry I haven't had time to dig into them yet, but there's obviously a lot of meat there. Um, and I am going to send those off to Russell so that he can take a look at them from the legal perspective. Don, you've got your hand up.
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay, Renee, you've got, no, your hand came down. Okay, um, hearing no opposition to the, uh, motion to adjourn. Uh, call the meeting adjourned.